Still's Opera Trouble Island. And the libretto was written by Langston Hughes and Verna Arvey. It's looking at the history of Haiti, about kidnapped people who were forced into slavery, and then the drums being the intervention. Culture, music, being the intervention.
Unheard of inspiration for European-based classical music of the 1930s. Curators turned to LA's Central Library for archives.
And I have to say Alan Westby in the music department was a wonderful resource for us. He helped us get all of the sheet music. And I scanned the conductor's sheet music, so you see that in the room.
And it's Still's music that you can learn to perform on piano, drums, and keyboards as part of the center's annual African-American composer series.
Knowledge of the composer as well as learning to play an instrument. And it's mostly for beginners, but it's pretty, it's pretty great what they get out of it.
Great and filling up fast. Join us for classical music lessons at the William Grant Still Arts Center at 2520 Southwest View Street in LA's wonderful West Adams District. The exhibit and lessons are free.
The lessons take place through May 11th. May 11th is also Dr. William Grant Still's birthday. So how do you connect with your constituents? One way is to have lunch with them. And that's exactly what Councilmember Paul Krikorian did. He hosted Lunch with Paul in Valley Glen, giving folks an opportunity to meet neighbors and learn about happenings around their community. And residents ate it up.
Well, today we're having another one of my events that we call Lunch with Paul. And it's a great opportunity to be able to support a local small business. And we invite our constituents to come out and chat with me, meet each other.
Well, the reason I come to these is, one, I'm very supportive of what he's been doing in our community. And it's also just the easiest way to get to him if I have a question. You can just walk up to him, tell him what you're concerned about, but he needs to hear your voice.
It's been a great treat for me to be able to have these with my constituents. And I think most folks enjoy this opportunity as well.
When it comes to scams, seniors are an easy target. But there are things you can do and be aware of to make sure you or your loved ones don't fall victim. Councilmember David Ruh and other city agencies held a workshop on how seniors can stay vigilant.
I just won five million dollars.
A recent consumer report stated that seniors and their families are scammed out of $3 billion a year.
Oh, wait a minute, Harriet Victoria. It says you have to send $600 to claim your prize. I think you better read the fine print.
Oh, no.
We started nine years ago to inform seniors and educate them on a peer-to-peer basis about senior fraud. The most common fraud is the grandparent scam, where they said that a grandchild or a spouse has been a victim of an accident, or they could be in prison. And they're asking for the seniors for money. The IRS scam, the romance scam, anything on the internet.
A man is young enough to be your...
I know, but everything likes older women. Isn't it cute?
Yeah, if you like babysitting.
There's all sorts of elaborate scams. And scams are constantly evolving. We know that seniors 65 and older are the number one victims of fraud.
And we're going to stop this number one form of elder abuse.
The Benvenidos Family Resource Center has a rich history of providing advocacy and support to the children and families of its surrounding community. LA This Week dropped by to check out their latest East LA open house.
Benvenidos has been around for almost 35 years. And it started out as a foster care agency, providing residential services for young infants and toddlers, and converted into becoming an agency providing foster care and adoption and a whole array of community-based services, principally here in the East LA area.
And what I do over here is I oversee all of our programming here in our East LA site, which includes mental health services, along with Project Safe LA, that really works on substance abuse, HIV, and Hep C prevention.
We're celebrating how Benvenidos is now affiliated with Hillside. We had a number of offices in the East LA area, and we've consolidated all those offices here. So this is sort of the open house of this new service center.
All services are offered for free. They're through Medi-Cal and other types of funding. And all you need is to come in and request services, and we provide the services for you.
Our overall goal is to have an important lasting impact on the lives of all the children, youth, and families that we serve.
Fixing the streets of LA isn't just men's work. These strong women from the Bureau of Street Services prove they've got what it takes to serve as role models for non-traditional careers.
One of my biggest emphasis on the city council is creating a pipeline for non-traditional careers for women to see themselves as future firefighters, police officers, and street maintenance workers. These are all really good paying careers. And there should never be a reason why women don't see themselves in this career path.
If you, as a woman, feel that you've got what it takes to get the job done, this is a job for you. No, there's no signs at the door saying that you can't. You can.
Just to go out there, and just to go out there and do it. There's too many opportunities out there for females. And they're giving us that opportunity right now. So why not take advantage of it? I love what I do. It's, we're fixing the streets, and we're learning new trades.
Enjoy some jazz at Union Station. Discover the next big food trend at FoodEcon. And walk for kids and for a good cause. All this and things to do. In celebration of Jazz Appreciation Month, LA Metro Art presents Jazz Tracks at Union Station. Spend an extraordinary evening of free live jazz showcasing the next generation of artists. Headlining the next performances will be acclaimed jazz trumpeter Christian Scott. Jazz Tracks at Union Station featuring Christian Scott brings sweet sounds to its historic ticket hall, Saturday, April 6th, beginning at 4:00 p.m. Union Station is located at 800 North Alameda Street. For more info, visit Eventbrite.com. FoodEcon returns to downtown LA. It's an edible extravaganza filled with pokey cauliflower rice and upscale toast. Discover the next big food trends. Challenge and satiate your adventurous palate. Get two whole days of sampling, shopping, and demo-watching at FoodEcon. The con happens April 6th and 7th at Downtown's LA's Magic Box at the Reef, and opens at 11:00 a.m., located at 1933 South Broadway. For more, call 213-763-5806. The Los Angeles Ronald McDonald House wants you to Walk for Kids 2019. Join this yearly walk to support children and families of the LA Ronald McDonald House. Giving hope and help to more SoCal families is literally a walk in the park. So save the date and bring the entire family to Walk for Kids 2019, taking place Sunday, April 7th, beginning at 7:00 a.m. The walk happens at Exposition Park on 700 Exposition Drive. For more info, visit walkforkids.org/LosAngeles. Art challenges life in the latest production from the Los Angeles Poverty Department. In this show entitled "I Fly," or How to Keep the Devil Down the Hole, the LA Poverty Department collaborates with residents of Skid Row to create provocative performances that confront vital issues and ask urgent questions. "I Fly," or How to Keep the Devil in the Hole, will be running at the Red Cat from April 4th through the 6th, beginning at 8:30 p.m. The Red Cat Theater is located at 631 West Second Street. For details, visit redcat.org. Are you ready for fun with your favorite flowers? Well, Flower School LA Open Studios welcomes students who are interested in floral design and want to make a beautiful arrangement with the help of an experienced florist. This studio class provides the opportunity to create a seasonal garden-style design while learning a few professional techniques of floristry. The Flower School LA is located at 223 South Los Angeles Street, and will offer its next two-day introductory series April 9th and 10th. For more class schedules or to register, visit flowerschoolla.com. And that's a look at some things to do. If you're a health nut living or working near the Fashion District, listen up. The area's first-ever weekly farmer's market was just launched, offering a variety of farm-to-table produce and other good eats. Take a look.
Welcome to the California Market Center. We're on the plaza of the CMC for the weekly Wednesday Farmer's Market.
This is actually the first farmer's market ever in the Fashion District. This is a way that we activate our public space to engage with the neighborhood.
These markets are the mirror of their communities. And in downtown LA, we have such a dynamic restaurant scene.
That's the idea of farm-to-table. You go to the farm, you go to the farmer, talk to him, smell the product, try the product. After, you can do your menu according to the quality and the seasonability of the product.
All you have to do is taste it, and you can tell the difference.
Because sometimes when produce goes to stores, you don't know how long it's been in a holding facility. Our stuff comes directly from the greenhouse to the farmer's market.
You're going to see a flavor profile that you're not going to be able to see at even the best grocery store chains. And we are so blessed here in Southern California to have so much.
A new exhibit highlights some of the freshest and most relevant artists working today. It's a feast for the eyes and then some.
We're inside Laluce de Jesus Gallery. Started out in Echo Park and then moved into Hollywood, and now we're here in Los Feliz. No, no, no. Right now is our 33rd Annual Juried Exhibition. So with this exhibition, we had 900 submissions that we'd get. We picked roughly 60 artists to exhibit in the two spaces that we have here in the gallery. There's a wide variety of work. There's painting, sculpture, drawing. Some of the artists are established artists within the community, we'll say, lowbrow, pop, surrealist community. And then other artists are artists that are still in school, in undergrad. There's definitely a variety of things that you'd see.
That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. If everybody would please take their seats. Welcome to City Hall. It is Tuesday, April 2nd. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. You want to call the roll?
Bloomingville, Bonin, Buscaino, Sidio, Harris Dawson, Weezer Coretts, Krikorian Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rodriguez, Rue Smith, Wesson. Eleven members present and are quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Martinez moves. Buscaino seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Rue moves. Weezer seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Okay, we'll be led today by Mr. Rue and our flag salute. All rise.
If everyone could all rise. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's continue to go through the agenda.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue item 1E to May 1st.
So ordered. Continue.
Items 1 through 7 are items noted for public hearing.
You have cards?
Yes, cards on all items.
All right, then, let's move on to the next section.
Items 8 through 11 are items for which public hearings have been held.
It's my understanding Mr. Rue wanted to hold 9. Okay, so let's hold 9. Mr. Krikorian?
No, I wanted to call 8 special.
Okay, we'll hold 8, we'll hold 9. Let us prepare to vote on the remaining items. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Continue.
Items 12 through 16 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this council. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Krikorian, are you, would you like to start the day? Then the floor is yours.
Yeah, come on up. Come on up. Good morning, Mr. President and members. I have a terrific story to tell you. Very often, one of the best parts of our job is when we get to recognize young people who've made a difference in something that they care about, who've helped other people, a group of people that maybe are less advantaged than they. And we do that frequently and we should. And this is a story like that. But it's a story that has a very, very different ending than most times when we hear a story like this. So I'm very blessed in my district to have some extraordinary schools. And one of those schools is the Oakwood School. And a few years ago, a group of young women at Oakwood were part of a club called the Girls Lead Club, part of Girls Lead International, which is supported by the feminist majority. And this gives young women an opportunity to learn leadership skills and also put those leadership skills to work. So as a part of the work that they were doing with this club on campus, these young women became aware of a social phenomenon happening in much of the developing world that most people are not aware of, that is a significant barrier to girls and young women advancing. And that is the very simple and ordinary process of menstruation. Because in much of the developing world, in India and many other places, when a young girl begins her period, there is a phenomenon of shame and exclusion and embarrassment that very, very often causes these girls to discontinue their education and to drop out of school. As many as 1 out of 4, and in some places, half of girls who, once they begin menstruating, drop out of school in some of these countries. And once they do, they are doomed to a lifetime of disadvantage and lack of opportunity and poverty for them and their family. So in a very real sense, a period becomes not the end of a sentence, but it becomes a life sentence. And so when these young women at Oakwood learned about this, they adopted, they began a project to help a school and a village in India by raising money. They started a Kickstarter campaign to try to raise some money in order to purchase a very basic machine that using very basic materials could create feminine hygiene products at very little cost for this village that would be affordable for these girls to be able to obtain. And at the same time, by doing that, they helped to create a micro-business in this village that would allow those who were manufacturing these products to begin developing an income that would then allow them to support their own education and a better future for their own families. Now, having this effect from a school in Valley Village to a village in India would be reason enough for me to bring these young women here and celebrate their amazing achievement. But they didn't stop there. They actually went to this village in India, documented their experience and their interaction with the members of this village, and decided that that was such compelling videos, such compelling interaction with these people, that they should make a documentary film out of that visit. And they did. Now, that would be a phenomenal enough experience to bring them here and welcome them, but it's not the end of the story. So do we have a clip from the film ready to go? Why don't we go ahead and show the clip so you can see a little bit of the film?
Can you explain what is this? Why are you not answering?
the accomplishment of creating a documentary film of that caliber that is now streaming on Netflix. That would be enough to recognize them. But the film was also recognized with awards from the Cleveland International Film Festival, the Traverse City Film Festival, AFI Fest, and Savannah, among others, which alone would be reason enough to recognize them as well. But it didn't stop there. The film clip that you just saw was nominated to be Best Short Documentary for the Academy Awards. And we have a clip now, I think, of something else as well.
Why are we still here? Why are we here so?
Are we doing another?
We're doing another one!
Oh, yes! Documentary short subject.
That's a good one!
All right.
That's a good one.
Here are the nominees. Black Sheep, Ed Perkins and Jonathan Chen. Endgame, Rob Epstein and Jeffrey Friedman. Lifeboat, Sky Fitzgerald and Bryn Musa. A Night at the Garden, Marshall Curry. Period, End of Sentence, Rika Zatavchi and Melissa Burton.
And the Oscar goes to Period, End of Sentence. This is the first Oscar nomination for Rika Zatavchi
I'm not crying because I'm on my period or anything. I can't believe a film about menstruation just won an Oscar.
And so, what started? What started as an effort of a few committed young women at a school in Valley Village ended up bringing this message to an audience of hundreds of millions of people around the world who watched as they won the Academy Award for the Best Short Documentary in the world.
Give them a round of applause for that, really.
So I'm very pleased to be able to welcome and to congratulate some of the students who were involved, some of the administrators from Oakwood, including Principal Williams Perkins Tift, and the producer of Period, End of Sentence, Oakwood teacher, Melissa Burton.
Wow, you did such a good summary of the whole process. I need to take you with me wherever I go. So it's been a really crazy journey. I think every teacher knows that the most joyous part of the job is that your students will take you places that you never expected to travel. And so from the United Nations to India, to Oscar, to here at City Hall, it has been a wonderful and exciting journey. You mentioned Ashley, you mentioned Girls Learn International, which is the program, and Ashley Steimer King is our program director for Girls Learn International. And that's a program where young women at 16 go to participate as actual delegates at the United Nations. And it was there that a group of students who are now alumni in college and executive producers on the film first learned about this issue of girls dropping out of school once they begin to menstruate. And perhaps because we're all from Los Angeles, we actually decided right away that the best way to raise awareness would be to make a documentary film. So 6 years later, a lot of work and a lot of new energy and passing of the torch to wonderful students and people. Our director of experiential learning food, Tran Chi is here and he was able to go to India with us and he has been helping on this way. And so a shout out to all the students who have come before. I think Lila Sugarman was on our Kickstarter and she's modeling our Pad Project sweatshirt because we're also now a nonprofit organization and our tagline is "A period should end a sentence, not a girl's education." So that's the tagline. This is, so shout out to Mason Maxim, who will tell us about her time in India, Lila Sugarman, Naomi Zwyback, Emma Blankstein, Maggie Brown, Dorothea Mulcahy, Maya Worth, and Naomi Lopez, who are doing all sorts of things from answering. We've received over 10,000 emails from around the world, requests for pad machines and partnerships. Maggie and Naomi and Lila just helped co-host at Gala, Girls Academy, Girls Leadership Academy, a screening of the film. High schools are wanting to partner, Girl Scout troops are wanting to partner. So it really is this movement that's catching fire and we're so honored to be here and it feels so great to be a part of it. So thank you so much.
Mr. Krikorian, I do have some folk on the queue would like to say a few words. Can we do that now?
If you don't mind, Mr. President, why don't we hear from Mason Maxim first?
You go right in.
One of the students who actually had the experience of being, helping to lead the Pad Project and going to India. So let's hear next from Mason Maxim.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mason. I'm a 10th grader at Oakwood and I've been involved in the project since I was in 7th grade. And last year in March, we had the opportunity to actually travel to India. And while we were in India, not only did we meet with girls at Action India in Delhi, that the Girls Internet International Chapter that we have there, but we also traveled to the village where the film takes place. And we were able to actually screen the film for the women, Sneha and Suman being two that actually came to the Oscars. And we were able to screen the film for them. It was kind of the first time we had showed the film. We were really nervous for them to see it. And they kindly welcomed us into their homes and made us a really amazing meal and we all got to sit around and drink chai tea and watch the film, which was a really amazing experience. Definitely something that I'll cherish for the rest of my life. This experience itself has just been so life-changing and amazing and I'm so grateful for everyone involved and all the amazing friends and Melissa, who has spearheaded this entire thing and made everything possible. So thank you.
And, Mr. President, they're still at work. They're still raising money for the Pad Project. So how, if somebody wants to contribute to the Pad Project, how would they do that? How do they contact you? All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, no, let's call Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Krikorian, for bringing these young ladies in. And, you know, congratulations. I remember I was watching the Oscars when that announcement was made and I thought it was a phenomenal testimony about how we are evolving and having conversations that we need to be having and not being shameful as women about what is natural, but more importantly, how you're bridging a gap internationally, which is phenomenal. Congratulations to you all for your work and your leadership in this area. I think you're an example of how, as women, we can continue to lift each other up regardless of the subject matter or area. So thank you very much. Congratulations on a well-deserved recognition and honor for your work.
Thank you.
Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Krikorian, thank you so much for this amazing presentation. You know, when I watched the movie, I was actually kind of surprised by my reaction. I was actually very shocked and very sad for the state of affairs for young girls around the world. The fact that so many little girls in countries that we often don't even think about. We often sort of, we all, we go about our business every single day. We don't think about the girls that are sometimes marginalized because of something so natural as your menstrual period. Something so natural as being a woman is sometimes demonized in other countries. And so I applaud you for being so courageous and speaking about something that we sometimes take for granted in this country. We have access to feminine hygiene products that other little girls in other countries simply don't. I want to wait for the summer to be able to enjoy this movie again with my daughter because she's a little bit too young. But I want to begin this conversation with her and I think this would be an amazing, amazing movie for her to watch with me. I also want to congratulate Melissa Barton. Thank you so much for not only an amazing, amazing award-winning short film, but for also instilling in your students the importance of standing up for other little girls around the world and for your amazing Pad Project, which I hope to get involved with. Congratulations! And I'm just, as another Valley girl, I'm just so proud that a Valley teacher gets to sit up here and be recognized for such an amazing film. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you, Mr. Krikorian.
Hey, Mr. Krikorian, before I call the next speaker, why don't you announce again if people want to donate, where do they donate?
I will. And first, I just wanted to respond briefly to Ms. Martinez because every year, Ms. Martinez conducts a drive for personal hygiene products for women in great need right here in the city of Los Angeles that we all try to support. And she does amazing work that's life-changing for those women too. So she will be, I'm sure, a fierce advocate for the Pad Project as well. And the Pad Project can be reached at www.theepadproject.org.
Thank you. Mr. Coretts.
And thank you, Mr. Krikorian, for bringing this forward. I remember watching just a few seconds of the Oscars and I saw that comment and I'm like, what is this film and why did they get an award? I don't understand. I always wanted to find out what the backstory was. And this is quite amazing, the fact that you have changed so many lives throughout the world and educated so many people. I mean, I personally had no idea that this was the case, that something so natural would be, result in such barbaric conditions and ruined lives in various countries around the world. This is a very barbaric time. We are seeing a lot of very strange things happening. We know what's happening in Brunei as we speak. But you've changed the world. You've made a difference in thousands of young girls' lives and it has to be very rewarding. It's not often that one gets that kind of opportunity. So I congratulate you. I know our entire city is so proud of you and everything that you've done. So thank you for your leadership and your actions and I hope you'll go on to having a life where you do this the rest of your life, impact the world in this way. So congratulations.
Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Krikorian, for bringing these amazing women in.
women in this amazing, amazing program highlighted here in City Hall. But I actually knew that you were going to do this presentation, because just this past weekend, I was able to meet Mason Maxim and her father at Larchmont Village. And she was so eager, and she came down and said, "I'm coming to City Hall this week on this presentation." And I learned so much about what she was doing, and I turned around and I told her, "Dad, wow, 10th grade already won the Oscar. Oh, my goodness." She set the bar so high. But, you know, Mason emailed me in advance to tell me more about the project that they worked on and the documentary, and, you know, and she wrote, "It's important to note that you don't have to go as far as India to find stigma around women's issues. Women all over the country suffer from a lack of access, as well as a price, as well as the price of menstrual products." So, I mean, I'm just so amazed by this 10th grader's ability to get engaged and involved in her advocacy, and you heard her speak. I, I mean, her star is bright, and I look forward to what she's going to do in the future. But like you said, Councilman Kukorian, she hasn't stopped here. The Pad Project has gone beyond, and she told me with all this new awareness and all this new money that they're raising, they're going back to these same villages to update these machines that could produce more pads, as well as going to additional villages. And locally, they went up to the state legislature to work with a Senate member, Christina Garcia, on the, ending the tampon tax in California. So their advocacy knows no bounds, and I'm so proud. And, and while the school is in your district, I could claim one of the students as one of mine. So, thank you, Councilman.
Back to you, Mr. Kukorian.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues, for your warm comments. I do want to take a moment to present, oh, thank you, to present these resolutions signed by all members of the City Council, to Period End of Sentence, the movie, to the Pad Project, and to this extraordinary teacher, Melissa Burton. So. Thank you. And then you guys, why don't you step out front this way. Everybody, take your visitor tags off. Cheer this way. Thank you, colleagues.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. And colleagues, before us today is a motion and a joint committee report asking city staff to look at implementing a paid parental leave program for the city of Los Angeles. I want to thank Councilwoman Nuri Martinez for partnering with me on this motion, as well as committee chairs Paul Kukorian and Karen Price and their committee members, who all provided a thoughtful input on this report. This is just the beginning of a lengthy conversation, but a conversation that is long overdue. As new immigrants to the United States, my parents struggled every day to provide for me and my two siblings, and staying home to care for me and for my brother and sister was not an option for my parents, nor was it an option for the thousands of families living in the community. Almost 40 years later, it is still not an option for many working families in Los Angeles. Today, 1 in 3 households in Los Angeles is liquid asset poor, meaning that these families are fewer than 3 paychecks away from being displaced and losing the very roof that is over their heads. What we have before us isn't a silver bullet, but a crucial piece of the puzzle, and a piece that every other developed nation in the world has decided is important enough to invest in. In fact, only Papua New Guinea, Suriname, and the United States make up the list of the world's nations that have not yet adopted a paid parental leave program. The U.S. is well behind the curve on paid parental leave, and we're going to change, and we're going to change that, and to tell new parents that you no longer have to choose between parenthood or your family's livelihood. We can count ourselves lucky to live and work in California, because our state leaders have put paid parental leave on the front, in the front. In the early 2000s, our legislature, looking at overwhelming evidence from the health, from health developmental and economic benefits of paid parental leave, decided to lead the way on a statewide parental leave policy. The current state's current program provides 60% to 70% of an employer's weekly salary for up to 18 weeks for postpartum and prepartum leave. And yet, many Los Angeles families forego the state program, choosing to work instead. In fact, when the state commissioned an independent study 10 years later, it found that families in Los Angeles and San Francisco access these benefits far less, largely in part because 60% to 70% of their paycheck was not enough to cover the bills. The motion before us today asks city staff to look into the feasibility of a wage replacement law that would ask employers to supplement on employees' existing SDI benefits to ensure that working parents receive 100% of their salary while they are resting, recovering, or bonding with their child. We are also seeking an independent economic analysis to identify potential impacts that such a policy might have, and including ways to mitigate costs to local businesses. And these are the things I look forward to and discussing further when we have the information come back. But for now, this is what we do know. We know that more bonding time improves the health and development of young children and can reduce infant mortality rates by as much as 10%. Studies have shown that longer paid family leave results in fewer low birth weights, early-term babies, higher, and higher rates of well-baby care, longer parental lifespans, improved mental health, and increased long-term achievement for children. We also know that the data, based on the first decade, that women who took a longer maternity leave reports an overall improvement in health, fewer depressive symptoms, and reduction in severe depression. We also know parental leave policies work to decrease unemployment, increase participation among women in the workforce, and reduce the pay gap between men and women. And we know that these policies are already in place in every other industrialized nation on earth. I think it's time we start this discussion in the city of Los Angeles, and I ask for everyone's eye vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ru. Ms. Martinez.
Mr. President, colleagues, you know, advancing paid family leave program in Los Angeles is one step further in ensuring that our city is a friendly, a family-friendly place for working families. I'm really proud to work alongside you, Mr. Ru, on this important legislation. You know, our workforce was developed almost 50 years ago, and our employment laws reflected the workforce, where the majority of our workforce was made up of men, and women did not enter the workforce more than 50 years ago. So times are changing, and we need to make sure that we reflect the existing families that our city currently, currently makes up of. You know, oftentimes, women who give birth have to return, 25% of the women who give birth often return to work 2 weeks after having a baby. 2 weeks after having a baby, for anyone who's ever given birth, I can tell you, you are not physically nor emotionally able to return to work, and most doctors won't even clear you to return to work. But those are the circumstances that a lot of women of color and, and families who are making minimum wage in our city have to confront with. Because our state and federal existing programs for you to bond with your baby often, often are catered to white collar, our white collar economy, a lot of our minimum wage workers are not able to take a 30% to 40% pay cut. That is impossible. For a woman who has to take a full 18 weeks to be able to bond with her baby, to ask that family to take a 30% to 40% pay cut to be able to bond with their family or their newborn baby, is almost impossible for a lot of minimum wage and people of color to be able to do. This is why I think this is so important, Mr. Ru, because we're making sure that the city of Los Angeles deals with this issue head-on and finally puts working families as a priority. A lot of times, people have asked, you know, how did you deal with your parental leave? Well, I was very lucky that I made the existing state and federal programs work for me, and I was very fortunate to have had a partner in my husband who was able to do the same thing. But my time with my baby, bonding with her, is not any more important than a woman making minimum wage should be able to bond with her newborn baby. So we need to make sure that we're leveling the playing field for all working families in our city, and that we're finally addressing the need to be able to provide 100% paid parental leave for all families in the city of L.A. I ask for your eye vote. Thank you.
Well said by the both of you. Okay, no more speakers on the Q. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tab you late.
14 ayes.
Okay. Why don't I? Mr. Murphy Shaw, are you still here? Why don't you come up? And you have Items 1 through 1H, and you have 2, 3, 5, 6, and 7. Go ahead.
Yes, good morning. Item number 1, I support. Item 6 and 7, I support. General public comment. I'm glad several projects are coming to Valley Village in CD 2. One is Burlington Coat Factory, and the other one is Ross. I'm excited. I wanted to tell my councilman that. Archdiocese of Los, I have a message for Archdiocese of Los Angeles. They need to lift the ban on drinking and alcohol. We can't serve it anymore. I don't know what, they can't serve it anymore, and I think that's wrong, and I think they should lift it up. I'm with the Knights of Columbus. We have our fish fries, and we can't serve beer or alcohol. That, that needs to be changed. Send me a, send a message to the Archdiocese of Los Angeles. We're not going to roll over and play dead.
Mr. Previn, you have Items 1A, then 1G, and then you have 3, 13, 14, and 16. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Deeply moving on Period End of Sentence, I have to tell you, my kid went to Oakwood, and we are so proud of that little group in Valley Village. And there's another one in Studio City called Skin that also won an Oscar forable, so we'll get them down here soon. Thank you for honoring them.
Why don't we move on to the agenda items, Mr. Previn?
Now, regarding the paid parental leave, I got to tell you, this is fantastic. I was at the public works here.
So, Mr. Previn, that's not subject to public comment. We just voted on it. The president just read out the items you can speak on.
So you can do that during your general, but so go ahead and stay on the items, Mr. Previn.
Yeah, okay. You're throwing me for a little bit of a, little bit of a looper there. How about the extension of the housing opportunity for AIDS, folks with AIDS? Is that okay? Fair enough. Let's go for that. I got to tell you, I appreciate that LSA is looking into that under O'Farrell's leadership. We want to make sure that everybody's taken care of. We also have another situation, which is up in the great CD 10. We've got a couple of cultural historical tax breaks that are being issued by the great Guban Adador himself, Commander Wesson. We appreciate it, because what this does is it...
So, Mr. Previn, again, that, that's not one of the items on the agenda.
Mr. Previn, come on now.
There are 2 like that. Am I missing it?
Mr. Previn, you know what items? Items 1, 3, 13, 14, and 16.
No, but also the liens. I did sign up on those, as you know. And so in a nutshell, I'll just give you the brief rundown. You got, you got some strong competition from Nuri Martinez on hashtag Women's History Month is over, but we're still celebrating. We got $3,554 lien on her, folks. Not bad. And then we have an extraordinary performance from the kid, the kid from CD 8, the New 8th. Marquis Harris Dawson has 2 liens, one at $3,741. He comes from the district which is struggling the most financially. And also, one for $4,022. So together, taken together, sir, he's a, that may be more than the tax break that's going to be issued for either of the CD 10, cultural historical. We're going to check on that and report back, but I'm not sure. Now, in terms of the $17 to $24 million, it's gone up about, from $17 to $24 million is the Great Streets in Reseda. Now, Bon and Kukorian said, "Forget it. We're not paying an extra $7 million." Thank you very much. But Bloomingfield, hashtag Bloomingfield, is on vacation. He's a, he, his guide said, "No, we're going to fight for it. We want the $24 million for the planters out on Reseda."
So, Mr. Previn, again, I don't think that's on the...
Let's give him his 1 minute for general public comment.
It's very hard, sir. Now, for general public comment, I want to draw attention to the closed session yesterday. I'd never seen anything like it. We were up in budget and finance. They had a stinker to IHL. They had Myers Nav, your inside boutique law firm that loves to hammer local groups on behalf of the city, getting $600,000 to take on the Santa Susana. We lost badly under Andrea Sheridan-Orden's leadership. We lost a big case. We didn't lose, but physicians for out in Santa Susana to clear up the area. So instead, we're going to hire a law firm, according to the folks up there, but this closed session was what I'm talking about. They had a presentation from Greg Smith. Now, Greg Smith, correct me if I'm wrong, former waste management guy, current waste management guy, current CD 12 guy sitting there under your leadership, sir, but he cannot be wheeling and dealing and making presentations in a closed session, he's not even on the committee, about a big cleanup out in the area where he and Bloomingfield, who is on vacation, are from, can we? I mean, that just, to me, that looks bad.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Let's get Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, you have Items 1A through 1H, Items 2 through 7, then you have 12A through 12C, and Item 13 through 16. Mr. Herman?
For your personal information, those of you here with a lien, it's not that I'm leaning this way, but rather, we're here to discuss why it's inappropriate to assess people's properties with liens that have exhausted their time. Why do you continue to bring these liens and bring such distress emotionally and physically to people who are elderly and African-American and disabled? Why do you do this? I'll tell you why. Because in CD 10, off of 2340 West 31st Street, a lien for merely $928.40, you, Mr. Chair, brought your constituents in here who sit in the back, and you make them feel very afraid to challenge you as to why you're bringing up this occurrence 5 years later. Why the fuck can the building safety people get it straight? When David Adelman was date raping, bitches, why don't you get it straight? The same issue with Mr. Dawson. He only has 3 liens, one for $3,741.21 off of 223 East 99th Street. What about Mr. Dawson at 2646 Dalton Avenue, only $762.55 and change? And what about jackass Mr. Harris Dawson, the bald fuck right there, off of South 8th Avenue of 5846? For $4,000 and change, you people are really fucked up. You need to send people a certified registered letter to the occupant owner, and when they come here, you should waive all...
this way, but rather, we're here to discuss why it's inappropriate to assess people's properties with liens that have exhausted their time. Why do you continue to bring these liens and bring such distress emotionally and physically to people who are elderly and African-American and disabled? Why do you do this? I'll tell you why. Because in CD ten, off of twenty-three forty West Thirty-first Street, a lien for merely nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty cents, you, Mr. Chair, brought your constituents in here who sit in the back, and you make them feel very afraid to challenge you as to why you're bringing up this occurrence five years later. Why the fuck can the building safety people get it straight? When David Adelman was date raping, bitches, why don't you get it straight? The same issue with Mr. Dawson. He only has three liens, one for three thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-one cents off of two-two-three East Ninety-Ninth Street. What about Mr. Dawson at twenty-six forty-six Dalton Avenue, only seven hundred and sixty-two and fifty-five and change? And what about jackass Mr. Harris Dawson, the bald fuck right there, off of South Eighth Avenue of five-eight forty-six, for four thousand and change? You people are really fucked up. You need to send people a certified registered letter to the occupant owner, and when they come here, you should waive all the three hundred percent interest liens. And I say to all the politicians who put liens on your constituents, fuck you! Then, on item towards the back, since I signed up on all items, as you heard, why is it that in CD fourteen, Harris Dawson, the plum asshole, and that fucking FBI wetback, El Sordo Weezer, for low residential land use? Fuck you guys! Get the fuck out of land use! Get the fuck out of Plum because you're under an FBI investigation for extorting people and taking development money! And the same motherfucking shit about the Catholic Church! Go to hell! Pinchi sordos! No hay justica! En la vida que nosotros viven, por chinga su pinchi madres jodidos cabrones catolicos, tu pinchi puto wees! Fuck you!
Give him his one minute.
Yes, I was at the budget meeting last night, and it seemed like there was a lynch mob created by Mr. Ba-a-a-a, and the other jack two asses, Mr. Bonin, who's bailing down over there, I see his fucking white bullshit head down there sucking my cock. Why is it that I am a subsequent dispute to the city of Los Angeles? You criminals deprived me of the right to petition? After all, I have liberties and safeguards under the Bill of Rights. Forty-two U.S.C., nineteen eighty-three, First Amendment. Fuck you white nigger politicians too! Because I'm a white nigger, and you're hearing it from me, two asshole city attorney, Mr. Fable from Pasadena? Fuck you! High in regard to the hierarchy of my First Amendment, values of government itself orchestrates the retaliation. Fuck you, Herman Jason Wesson. I love you, bitch.
Thank you. Okay, okay. Let's continue item one D for thirty days. And without objection, so ordered, and then we'll vote on the remaining. Let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Are the remaining items for item one?
Yes, the remaining items on item one, I'm sorry. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
So we conclude the multi-comment of today. Let's vote on items two, three, and number seven. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Now we'll vote on items four, five, and six. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Fourteen eyes.
And now we can vote on items twelve through sixteen. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
And members, we need on item seven to vote on reconsideration for item seven. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Item seven, do we have Mr. McDonald? Kevin? Kevin McDo- here he comes.
Thank you, President Wesson. My name is Kevin McDonald from the law firm Jeffery, Mangles, Butler &amp; Mitchell, and I support the recommendation from the Bureau of Engineering. I represent the owner of the property, who wants to redevelop that property, which necessitates abandoning that easement. He's going to redevelop it and maintain the historic structure that's currently in place and improve the area. The easement is already sealed on both sides, so I concur with the recommendation from Bureau of Engineering.
Thank you. Okay, so now let's vote on item seven. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. I want to make a motion to move item eight B. That'll be seconded by Mr. Buscayena. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, let's kind of quickly move to general public comment. Do we have Mr. Smith, Adam?
Good morning, council members. Mr. Bonin, my name's Adam Smith. I'm an organizer with White People for Black Lives. Last week, I was observing a sanitation sweep on Lincoln in Venice, and LAPD Officer Kristen DeLatory came by. Not knowing who I was or why I was there, I asked DeLatory when the unpermitted planters were going to be installed on the sidewalk behind the Public Storage Company on Rose and Third in Venice. She replied that she didn't know for sure, but that she heard Public Storage was planning something, Mr. Bonin. So my issue is, the Bureau of Engineering has confirmed every planter across the city is unpermitted. The city attorney has confirmed to LACAN that each planter is a misdemeanor code violation. My question is, if Officer DeLatory knows that a private company is planning to violate city code by illegally installing something on the public sidewalk, and the LAPD aren't going to do anything about it, what are you, Mr. Bonin, going to do about it? What are you going to do to protect your unhoused constituents in this instance? Public Storage is the same company that has power washed the public sidewalk to disrupt and displace the unhoused folks from legally camping.
Okay, that concludes general public comment. What's remaining, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, they're posted, they're referred. Announcements, members, announcements, announcements. Then let us all rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Buscay- well, let us all rise in the council chambers. Mr. Buscayena.
Thank you, Mr. President. And members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Philip Guglielmo, who is the father of both our general manager of Lakers, Neil Guglielmo, and former deputy mayor under Mayor Riordan, Ann D'Amato. Mr. Guglielmo passed away peacefully on March twenty-ninth at the age of ninety-three, a loving father, grandfather, and great-grandfather. He was a commercial fisherman for seventy years, proudly served the U.S. Army during World War II, and came home to meet the love of his life, Beatrice Canetti Guglielmo. His many passions in life included the ocean and spending time with his family and friends, especially cooking delicious meals and hosting holiday dinners. Mr. Guglielmo was a member of the San Pedro Elks Club, as well as the Italian Catholic Federation. Again, he's survived by his children, Neil, son Nick, daughter Ann, daughter Nancy, as well as eleven grandchildren and fourteen great-grandchildren. In addition to his immediate family, Mr. Guglielmo is survived by his sisters Mary and Rose, and many cousins, nieces, nephews, and friends. And in lieu of flowers, the family respectfully requests that gifts in his memory be made to the Mary Star of the Sea High School in San Pedro. He will be greatly missed, and again, our love and condolences and prayers to the entire Guglielmo family. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rudd, can I hear you?
Absolutely.
If we could add Mr. Rue's signature, and Ms. Rodriguez. So, still looking to my left, any adjournings to my left? Mr. Sadio.
Yes, I asked. I adjourn in the memory of Ralph Furtig. Many of you may recall him in the halls of this chamber and this body. He was an advocate for the most marginalized in the world. Ralph Furtig was a small group of people called Freedom Riders in the nineteen-sixties. He grew up in a very progressive household. He was stalwart of all things good in the city, in the state, this nation, a champion for justice. I knew him from ADA, from Americans for Democratic Action. I knew him from his work at USC. I worked with him, I think it was about ten, twelve years ago, in much of our work for the homelessness, for the homeless, rather. And I also knew him personally because I was a, I am a close friend of his son, David. David and I went to People's College of Law, and I got to know his dad. He's a great man. He was a tireless fighter and champion for those in need. I was surprised when I got elected, I saw him come to my office, walk in with a whole group. He was at the School of Social Work at USC, and he had all his students and many of his colleagues, and they were here to advocate for safe parking. And it was a big project of his, and he had mobilized people like he had his whole life. He died at eighty-nine years young because he continued to work and advocate for all good issues, even until his final days. Died of Parkinson's disease, predeceased by his wife. I recall the challenges he confronted during that time period. We were kindred spirits in that, in those challenges and those issues. An extraordinary man. My heart goes out to his son, David, and to the family, but more so to those who will miss a very capable, ardent, and fierce advocate for all the things that we care about. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Bonin?
Yeah, I'd just like to be added to that as well.
If we could add Mr. Bonin.
I knew Ralph in his last decade, but even when he was really impaired by his illness, he was down here constantly, particularly on the safe parking program, and the disease did not at all impair his passion and his advocacy.
Mr. Harris Dawson as well, Mr. Corretts.
I'd like to be added to that, and I knew him many years ago from various things in democratic politics, and he was one of those great individuals that spent his entire life doing nothing but good, and a real mensch, and he'll be missed by a lot of people.
Okay, so on that, we want to make sure that Mr. Sadio, Bonin, Harris Dawson, and Corretts have the ability to sign off. Looking to my right side, I do not see any adjournings to my right. Members, this meeting's adjourned. Oh, whoops, whoops, sorry. Mr. Weezer?
Can you add me to the fill-up adjourning motion, please?
Okay. Do we have that? Okay. So with that said, this meeting, this meeting's adjourned.
Wilmington and San Pedro have always been the gateway to Catalina since back in the late eighteen hundreds. My father, myself, and a friend of mine started Catalina Express, along with my brother Tim, in nineteen eighty-one. And we came in to actually replace the seaplanes that were at that point going out of service. So what we needed to do was replace that service with fast boats. So we went out, we bought one boat, it was a fifty-passenger, and we started out with doing three runs a day. About a million to a million-two people go to and from Catalina on an annual basis. And back in nineteen eighty-one, when we started, I think we carried thirty-five hundred people that year. Both my daughter Amanda and my son Eric, they're all in the business. This building was actually built back in nineteen sixty-six, and it was the seaplane hangar building. They'd take off underneath the Vincent Thomas Bridge. Our goal was, was really to make it so that people felt their trip started when they got here. There's bocce ball courts here located on premises. There's also a putting green. We got fire pits when it's chilly out, and people do seem to feel like they're on their way to Catalina as soon as they walk through the gate. Wilmington used to be the location for the freight service here to the island, and to bring them both onto the same property has been a home run. The Port of Los Angeles has been a real partner in this all the way along. They worked very well with us in trying to come up with a solution for this move, and I think that what we've come up with is one of the best locations we have. When we brought our employees back to this location, we were able to bring a hundred employees back this way. Catalina Express employs approximately three hundred and twenty-five employees in total, with the vessel crews and administration and ticket sales and the terminal facilities. Avalon Freight Services employs approximately twenty-six people with operating the two vessels that we have, as well as the warehouse here and on the island. The island is always growing. It's been an exciting part of being, not just in passengers, but also in freight now. A normal week of freight going to Catalina Island is five days a week, fifteen trailers, it's shipping fuel, it's food, it's beverages, it's everything you can imagine that has to go to an island to keep it moving. My favorite hobbies are getting out and going fishing. It's a lot of fun to go out off the island and do some fishing. It's always been known as a fishing paradise. Well, I think the favorite part of Catalina Express for me is working around the water. I've been around the water all my life. We just like to be a big part of this overall Catalina Express family. Our whole team here has worked hard to build what we've built. There's no I's here, it's a lot of we's, and we really all enjoy it.